Okay, this July 4th, 2017, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. I wish every—
January 4th?
January 4th, yes. What did I say?
We hope July.
Wishful thinking.
I'm still in Florida. As I said, the January 4th, 2017, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. So, first order of business, approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Al?
Approve the agenda.
Moved by Al, second by—
Al's second.
Denise. Any changes? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the agenda is approved. Public comment? Okay, no public comment. Approval of the minutes? Could I have a motion to approve the regular December 21st minutes? Denise?
Al motion to approve the December 21st regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Al. Are there corrections? Denise?
Okay, on page one, when we're talking about approving the December 7th minutes, the WIECERT is still misspelled, so where it says "page three replace," it is—the correct spelling of that name is W-I-E-C-H-E-R-T. And then on page three, we're talking about retirement incentives. After it talks about Kenny and what he said, I also made a comment that I wanted to make sure that we weren't just limiting our options for staff to those with a bachelor's degree. So, I do want it noted in the minutes that I did, you know, make that comment, that I wanted to be able to have that flexibility of considering those with master's level.
Okay.
And then the last one, on page eight, when we're talking—well, we review the warrants, just that I had suggested that we rename, I guess is the way to say it, rename the Facilities Replacement Development and Maintenance Trust to the Development, Maintenance, and Replacement Trust. So, just to kind of reverse that.
Other changes? Hearing none. Can we approve the minutes with those changes? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Minutes are approved. Can I have a motion to approve the non-public minutes for December 21st? Al?
So moved.
Moved by Al, is her second. Seconded by Denise. Discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Abstained.
Seven in favor, the student rep abstains. Announcements, accommodations, comments from the district? None? Okay. From the board? None? Okay. District reports? Assistant Superintendent?
I have something to say. Just a couple of quick things, because I know you have important budget business to get to. I just did want to remind you that last year, you did a lot of work around the sabbatical process, and we are coming up on the application deadline for sabbatical applications from professional staff. The deadline is—the policy says January 15th, but that's the Sunday of Martin Luther King Weekend, so we've extended it to four o'clock PM on January 17th. But what that means is—and I have had—I have had three staffs so far reach out with the—with the notion that they are going to be applying for sabbatical. But what it does mean is we've got to kick into action, the process, to review those sabbatical applications. One of the things that changed last year is we changed the sort of the review process, and one piece of that is the—what constitutes the review committee. And one of the things I do need is a school board member who would be willing to serve this year on that committee. I don't need someone to identify themselves now. Certainly, the next meeting would be fine, because that's about the time we'll start to begin to review those applications. But I will be looking for somebody on the board to join us. The committee will be made up of a teacher from all four buildings, an administrator from—a building-level administrator, a district office administrator, myself, and then a school board member. So, anyway, if anybody's interested, please be thinking about that.
Be happy.
Want somebody now, or?
I don't need somebody now, I was just—if—
Let's wait, because somebody else—
If you want to, just think on it, that's fine.
Okay.
It will involve a handful of meetings, so just want to put that out there. Another thing I wanted to mention is a couple of committees that have sort of just gotten underway. It's kind of exciting, out of the summer proposal work last summer, the reading instructors at both elementary schools, as well as our ESOL teacher at Moheram, developed a proposal around literacy and reading instruction, and we've formed a committee that's a joint masked way Moheram committee to begin to look at the notion of literacy instruction in the district. One of the things that teachers at the K-4 level have mentioned as—they're very appreciative of all the time we've focused on math, because it certainly has done a real positive improvement in our math program, but they're concerned that we're not giving enough focus to literacy. So, it's kind of exciting to have a teacher-led initiative to kind of begin to look at that. I would anticipate a strategic goal coming out of this for next year that would involve the beginning to look at that. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, the Sustainability Committee, their goal for this year was to try to map the curriculum—the district curriculum K-12 around sustainability concepts, and it's been a bit of a struggle for them. So, they did reach out to me to get me involved, and we are in the process of putting together a survey to begin to map—to work with staff to collect that information to be able to map that. So, I'll be joining the Sustainability Committee to help them do that. So, hopefully, we'll have a report for you on that before the end of the school year. So, thank you.
And Sarah?
So, Todd, with those sabbatical things, how does that work budget-wise? Because we didn't put money aside for sabbaticals, so we're coming into that same issue that we came into last year, which is we hadn't budgeted money for it, but—
When we put the draft budget together, we knew that the maximum cost to the district would be $30,000. So, the draft budget does include $30,000.
And I would mention that one of the things I have explained to people is that full-year-at-half-pay option is actually less costly to the district, and so people do—are aware that a proposal that's full-year-at-half-pay is actually a zero-cost item to the district, because the savings in salary then gets used to pay for the substitute replacement. Yes?
This is in the just recently negotiated contract.
Yes, it is.
Like, I believe it's—you can have one full-time person and one half-time person.
Correct. But you don't have to.
You don't have to.
And we just did that through policy. We approved a policy.
Yeah. And I would say it's—it's been very exciting to see staff get interested in it. It's something the district has not made a priority of for quite some time. I think it's been at least 16 or 17 years since we granted one, and at least it's got those—the creative juices going. So, I'm hopeful that we'll get some really good proposals.
Okay. Other questions? Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. So, the first thing I would like to share is Todd and I joined the middle school competency leadership team today, and they're planning a public forum on the competency work for parent feedback, and is going to be on January 25th at the middle school. And it's open to— (noise) (inaudible) 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 Seven? Six? Seven o'clock, in the library at the middle school. They will be reporting out on that forum on the February 1st meeting, and giving the board an update as to where they are in—on February 1st, then further in the spring in April, and then the last presentation from the committee would be in late May, early June, first meeting, latest in June. And so, to keep the board apprised of its progress, and to answer any questions that you have. So, if you can't make the 25th meeting, you'll get the Reader's Digest version on the February 1st meeting from them. They'll be here to talk to the board. Oh, we talked previously about how well our students did on the SAT last year. As I was preparing our budget presentation for next week, we picked up another piece of really great data. Last year's class, 92% of them went on to college, so 70% were four-year, and then the other 22% were either three-year, two-year, or one-year programs. 4% took a gap year, and then 4% went into the military. 92% college placement is the highest we've seen, so it goes along with the highest SATs we've seen. So, it just was a banner year last year for—the high school, and as a reflection, the K-12 operation. I just wanted to give you that data tonight, because it'll show up in the public hearing, and you'll wonder, "How come you didn't tell us that?"
I'd like one comment. You know, on that—when you do those stats, ironically enough, because I have one of those 4% in the gap year, I think an interesting thing to pick up on that is, a lot of kids, when they do gap year, what they do is they do their college acceptance already, and they've already put their deposit down, told their college for the year. So, you—I mean, technically, you may figure that in, your percentage, so it'd be that little higher.
So, I think what I'll do well is I'll have Heather check that 4% and see how many have taken—have done that. That's great. So, congratulations to the high school.
Will there be any press release about this? I mean, we've had that information about the SAT for a while, and my understanding is—it's—it's—was it the second in the state, or?
It was. And second in the state in mathematics, and a third in ELA.
I guess—
So, yes.
Phenomenal result.
Number of articles will be coming out this month related to the math program, our SAT results, our college placement results. So, all of that is in the works as we speak.
Okay, good. Other questions for Jim? No? Business administrator? No? Student Senate report?
So, we are at the Student Senate, talking about a winter carnival, which would be, I think, the last day before February break, just to give the kids a little time to decompress, because right now, we're going into midterms, and then it's a crazy time, and then everyone gets to sigh of relief later. So, thinking of putting on something for that. And then, our advisor also wants to start talking about coming up with a successor for me, because my term unfortunately ends in a matter of months now. So, we've got to start talking about somebody else to fill in. So, we'll—we'll see how that goes, see how much interest there is, and if there's multiple people, we'll run an election, and the person with most votes gets in.
Great. Okay. So, now move to discussion items. So, we have the—we actually have a motion that was postponed. Al made the motion, so I wonder if you want to maybe remind people of the motion, because a lot has happened since—you made that motion and I seconded it.
Okay, so I made a motion, and it's like I try—you know, I've killed people with numbers the last two meetings. So, on the Sue's sheet, that is the motion.
Do you have—
Option one, which includes an additional $100,000 of revenue, so the subtraction less revenue is $643,759,000. And what that does is that pushes our—our goal initially was a 3.25% global impact, but when you use the additional revenue, it pushes our impact down to 3%. And the thought behind that is to try to mitigate the tax increase. And so, you'll see that—that—when you do that, Durham becomes 4.18%, Lee 2.97%, and Madbury is actually negative .81%. So, that was the motion. My thinking being that when we did our goal session, it never really entered our mind—well, actually, we debated it about the 3%, but it seemed unachievable, and we're actually at the point where we could achieve it. So, I think that—that's why—I think it's the best option.
And that option just takes $238,000 from these two funds, is that correct?
Uh, I have to go back and do this, just like—
It takes $100,000 from the additional—
Let's have that paper. It took—didn't it take 238 from the emergency fund, and then 100 from the benefit stabilization?
That's exactly right.
I know it's 400,000 is tuition.
Right.
So, it must be 138,000 from the emergency fund—
Yep.
—and 100 from the benefit stabilization.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep. Yep, that's right.
Okay. Okay. And I seconded the motion. I had originally thought we should have option two on the table, because it took less from the funds, but I'm convinced that with the—the total amount that we have in—in our funds that we could draw from is 700,000, so this takes about a third of it. And I think down the road, with—the lower cost of—the positions, with—the retirement, the budget is going to be—we're not going to have to rely on these funds in—probably for next year. And we can probably replenish those funds if we sell the property, or there are other ways in which—we—you know, if there's a surplus, we could replenish it. So, I'm—I'm fine with taking the 238,000. So, Denise?
I also, though—and I'm not sure how this is going to play out, if we have to vote on that—motion first, but option three, which includes the additional 55,000 for the LPN position, and I know that—I—I'm really—would like us to seriously consider that.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out what the best way to attack that is. Do you want me just to pull the motion, and then we can discuss the LPN position, and then someone could make a motion after that discussion, or I—
Let's do that. Let's do that.
You want to do that? Okay, so then I'll withdraw my motion.
And I'll—I'll withdraw it. And so—so, there's no motion on the table now.
Okay.
I know that—essentially, what we have, two options. If the board is comfortable with taking 238,000 from the—these funds. Option one does not include the nurse. Option three includes the nurse. Okay, is that clear? And I believe the figure—the percentage figure—Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, should be—you know, the fourth—on option three, the fourth number down, should be something like 3.14, is that right? Okay.
Not 3.38.
Not 3.38, okay. So, the total impact—the global impact, what we call the global impact of one, is three, right, Al?
Right.
And the global impact of three is 3.14. So, even if we add in the nurse position, we are still below the 3.25 goal. Am I correct on that?
Yep.
Okay. So, is that—so, those are—unless people want to go back to the one point—138, the two options we have before us are one and three. Am I right with that? Okay. So, then, why don't we have a discussion about whether we want to go with—you know, we can talk—we can talk about any of them, but it looks like that one and three are probably the choices we have.
Okay.
Sure.
Could I just step in, not related to money, but in terms of how we are talking about the position? And I think Ken, I'll defer to you, but CNA positions and LPN positions, although distinctly different, are on the wane. Those positions seem to be disappearing in favor of nurses. So, do you agree with that? Because I know in the school side of it, any LPN we have had in the past has had to become a nurse based on New Hampshire law related to providing services to kids. So, I guess what I was suggesting is, the budget amount's fine, that just that we—we talk about it as a health position, and then I'll attack it from the perspective of, this is how much money we're working with, what can we get for that—for that money? That 55,000 would put you in the beginning end of a professional range of a nurse, so it should be sufficient. It's just how we're referring to it, because I don't want to get the motion, and we're going to do an LPN, and then there isn't any LPN that's available.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we have that flexibility.
Okay. Denise?
So, just to make sure I'm clear, this—this position is in—is basically an assistant to the RN at the high school. Am I correct about that?
The position as—as it was proposed is a high school position.
Right.
And I don't—we don't—we don't typically have—if they're both RNs, then we don't have a boss RN, because we've never had two. I would assume that based on their skill set, they would do what we do in the counseling department, and divide the students based on grades or alphabet, so that it's an equitable load. But if it turns out to be two professional positions, then they would be equal. If it turns out, we can hire a—a position less than a nurse, and that person will work directly for the nurse. In that case, there would be a supervisory role. They're just trying to keep the flexibility in the conversation.
Can I ask—just from a—you know, a space thing, that's a small office. How do you put two people in that tiny office, or how are we going to navigate that?
Well, my recommendation would be for Suzanne to look at what recently has occurred in that area, where we moved Cory into that—that area. I mean, the—the issue is you'd want to have those nurses close together. The other piece is that right now, there's office space that we keep outside the nurse's office for our full-time substitute coordinator and stuff like that. So, I think Sue—Suzanne can figure out the logic of that, but I think we want to keep the services close, because the kids are used to going to a certain location.
Okay.
Just to—to speak to what Jim said, I think having that flexibility, when you have someone with that RN degree, you increase what they're able to do on their own, which really empowers that position. So, I think you'll get someone able to do more. But I—I do want to point out to people that—you know, just from knowing Tracy, there are times where there's not a nurse, and there's an acute need at a school, and the nurses work as a team. And, you know, speaking for my wife, there are times that she's gone over to another school, because there's that acute need, and someone's sick, or someone's at a conference or whatnot. So, even though this is high school, I think keep in mind, too, it does give a little resiliency to a very tight system.
Sarah?
I'm sure this is in Suzanne R. Data somewhere from a while ago, but how many more kids are going to be at the high school next year than there are there currently?
So, the—
Could you—I'm sorry, you have to—
So, right now, we have 767 students, I believe, as of yesterday. I think that's the last time I looked. And we should be around 804, right around there.
Great, thank you.
Could I just ask, I mean, is there—is—is the nurse overloaded now?
Right now, the nurse ha—we are sharing some support with the middle school right now. So, we have a—someone who's coming part—we're sharing clerical support with the middle school right now, to help with some of the needs that we have. It's difficult, because the nurse right now is—is working with 504 plans, and we have an increased numbers of 504s. And so, ideally, you'd like the nurse to attend 504 meetings and be part of those types of things. However, with scheduling and covering the office, that's not happening. So, with medical 504s, this is—this increased numbers of medical 504s, that's a need that we do have. And having an additional person, whereas if the nurse needs to leave the office, we would—the kids would still have access, and adults would still have access to a nurse in the office, so that that responsibility can be shared.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I'd also like to say that the nurse also works with the faculty and with the adults in the building. So, when I look at the nursing position, I look at somebody who's serving the whole community. So, it may be approximately 800 students, but there's also going to be at any given time, 200 adults in the building, so you're really looking at all of those people as well. So, I'd just like to add that.
Okay. Dan?
And Pep.
One other thing that jumped out at me in the request is, the state average, if I'm reading this correctly, is one nurse for every 454 students. And so, we would be almost double that average if we stayed with one nurse at 800, so—
Okay. Sarah?
When these positions were put in as a yellow sheet, and—and when we were given positions at the last meeting, we were told these were sort of the highlighted positions. I guess I—I'm uncomfortable—now that we've dealt with those positions, I'm uncomfortable, as a board, us deciding which would be the next most important one. I mean, I—I look at some of these, and I say, "Okay, well, you know, we've heard from the elementary schools for a number of years about the—the needing to increase those positions, so that you could make them full-time." I know we have lost—and I think my hairment's probably the same, but I don't know that personally, but I know we have lost for the past two years two very valuable people at those technology positions. I would think that there are positions that Catherine's putting forward that are also, you know, very important. And—and so, I guess I am uncomfortable, while I—while I can appreciate the different options and the—you know, looking at the percentages and such, I'm concerned, as a board, that we are the ones bringing forward this position, as opposed to hearing from the administration as to what position would you go to next if you had $55,000. So, there it is.
So, when we prioritized the list, my mind was strictly on, as I said, the last meeting, academics. I do think that the nurse position is important. I think you get into a situation of two-to-one ratio between the high school and the elementaries, and you'd say, "Well, just reassign one of the elementaries." The reality is that the health situations that each of the school nurses are dealing with are significant, you know, at every single building. The tech positions are high on my list, on Carrie's list, on Dennis's list, which is why we continue to bring them back. If I had to—to weigh that position right now against the—the nurse position, tonight I would say it would be the nurse position because of the health needs of our kids. However, having said that, those tech positions are really, really important. We'd lose every year—we've lost the person who is doing an incredible job to school systems that have taken the step and said, "This isn't a support position, this is a teaching position." And so, in conversations with Carrie and Dennis, that would be—if—if we run into the situation where the health insurance costs come in lower than the 14.1%, that would be where we would go next. The special ed positions that Catherine promoted are all needed, but in my more recent conversations, as I shared at the last board meeting, Catherine is optimistic that there would be a reduction in out-of-district placement that would allow her to come back and—and share with the board that she feels like she could add those positions without adding new costs to the district. So, the tech position and the special ed positions are really still out there, but we—in terms of priority, I—I pushed them off to the spring to see how the health insurance worked. And had I had a little bit more forethought when I was doing the yellow sheets for the nurse position, I would have included it, but I didn't see the financial pathway there without adding to the budget, and I was continually trying to, you know, bring it under control, along with the board, of course. And so, this would be the position that I would support as the next in-line as superintendent, just because I know the health needs that are occurring throughout the district. Ken's point is, we do have a substitute nurse, she's only under contract for 41 days, and so if a nurse is out because they're sick, that person gets used. But 41 days for—for schools, and it doesn't take long for those 41 days. My original thought was that this position was needed for the high school, when we're approaching 800 students, and both elementary schools will be around, you know, 350, 360 next year. There's a certain logic there, but then, when you look at the health concerns that we're dealing with across the district, it only—it only reinforces the need. So, it—that would be how I would do it, Sarah. That would be exactly the next recommendation, but I—I will bring back those tech positions. We have—we've—we have lost in the last two years, every time we've tried to get those positions off the ground, and—and we've really got to stop that hemorrhaging, because, you know, smaller districts than we are, are professionalizing those positions, because they see them as necessary.
Al?
Okay, so I really struggled with this one. But I—you know, as I'm thinking about it, part of it is, the increasing health needs that we have is partially because we're bringing more things in-house, which really saves us money. is partially because we're bringing more things in-house, which really saves us money. But the cost of that, bringing things in-house and saving us money, is we have kids with far greater health needs. So it's, I mean, to say no, that we're not going to provide someone disservice for health is really almost impossible in my mind. But what I've been looking at is, especially in this budget, we've kind of, it actually goes back to something that Maria said, which is controlling the growth of positions in the budget that controls the future budget. And it's like, and this budget really is kind of balanced. We reallocated resources by cutting two positions and have, in essence, put it over into the high school. And so we've really, you know, I mean, I was just talking to Jim before we started, and it's like, really, I was saying it's less than .3 positions that we've added total in this budget. So we've really tried to control the cost and reallocate everything and be as fiscally responsible. And so I was, can we wait a year and then add it to the top of the yellow sheet next year? But again, I'm like, if it's health needs that are impacting students, then it's going to impact their achievement. So it's almost impossible to say no, I think, to that. So I'm hopelessly wavering on this position.
Hopelessly?
So in thinking about the students that we're keeping in, if we were to send them out, each of those children would be well over $100,000 a year. So forever. You know, so at a young elementary age, you're at least at 100, and that's at the rate right now. It increases by 5% every year.
So it actually saves us money, doesn't it?
It saves us money, yes.
That's what I was thinking.
And we can do that and still stay within our budget goal?
Yep.
So Denise?
So I'd like to make a motion that we go with option three, which includes the $100,000 additional revenue and $55,000 for another healthcare position, I guess is the right wording of it.
Okay. Moved by Denise, is there a second? Second by Dan. Further discussion on this, on option three. Option three has been moved and seconded. Maria?
Just because I love being a pain in the neck. I like the option. I just like language to be understandable. Taking money out of savings accounts are not new revenue.
Oh.
It's just not. And the same thing would impact if I take money out of my savings account. It impacts me in many ways. So we have people that know how to write English better than I do, come up with some other word, but I'll vote for the motion. But it isn't revenue.
Kenny?
And the reason I feel strong about it is I think we, as a board, have really identified wellness as something really, really key. As we, you know, education, you know, that's the business that this is in. That's what we're doing. And wellness is just such a component of that and a component of what kids are going to go out to the world with. And when the high school's school nurse is really busy with acute X, Y, and Z, there's no time to even move beyond that position, which is promoting wellness, because that's really what the philosophy of that position in our district is. And I think having, as I said before, that resiliency will really work in parallel with our wellness goal. So I support that.
Further comment on the motion to adopt option three? Hearing that, are you ready to vote? Al is in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, none opposed. So option three is approved, which then, that then gives you the budget then, right? There's no further, right? Okay. So that gives you all the numbers then to...
Due to the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we have a default budget, which, do we need to approve that?
You don't. I just wanted to bring it back to you to make sure you had no further questions. And I do want to tell you that the form that I have is not the form we're going to use because the DRA has changed that, and I'm still waiting to get that released from the website. But the number will still be this. Well, I say that hesitantly because I was told today that perhaps we'll have to include the other funds in there. So that's a change in the way we've done it in the past. So I'm waiting for a ruling on that, but we'll know that by the public hearing and by the time we post it. So that number is still good for now.
I had a thought about, like, whether on warrant seven, where we have our budget...
Yep.
I think unless you've been following our discussions, you won't know that the default budget is greater than the actual budget we're proposing. Is that something we can include in an explanation or, because I don't know how anybody could figure that out, really?
In the explanation, we can put...
We could put something in there, yeah. Have to think about how to wordsmith that one.
Well, the explanation, we have lots of flexibility.
Well, you have to be careful, though.
Well, more flexibility than we do in the warrant.
Right, right.
I mean, just to explain that the two numbers, comparable numbers are the default budget and was it Fund 10 or something?
Well, that's the way it's always been, but today in my conversation with DRA, that wasn't what I heard. So I have a new rep, so I'm waiting for an answer on that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
When will you have that answer?
Well, I'm supposed to have it today, but I will have it by the public hearing. Definitely.
Okay. So do we need to approve each individual warrant article? Is that the next thing we need to do?
Well, remember, you just, yeah, with, so the warrant articles really should be approved after the public hearing?
After the public hearing, you'll finalize it, but you want to approve, you can't add anything new after your public hearing. But if you want to tweak them a little bit, you can after your public hearing, but you can't add anything new. Remember, you'd have to have another public hearing if you were going to do a new warrant article.
So the reason we have them tonight is we wanted the board to look at the explanations because invariably, that's the place where the board wants to make changes if the explanations don't resonate, if we use words like revenue when it's saving.
Okay. Should we go through each explanation then?
That's what I think is the next step.
Okay. So you don't have an explanation for three, but I don't think we usually do have a...
Right. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Okay, do you want, just people read, take a second to read the explanation for four?
And this particular language is language we've used in the past, so it might resonate with the board. It's not new, new.
Looks good to me. Kenny?
The one question I have is, is kind of the clarity where the $200,000 comes from? That it's not that we're asking the public, in addition to our budget, giving another $200,000? But if I'm right, the $200,000 comes if we have some unexpended revenue at the end?
Or, yeah. Unanticipated revenue and unexpended balances.
So I don't know if it, in the explanation, if we should explain that.
What we used on Article Six was no amount to be raised by taxation.
Which, I don't, I don't actually like that. I was actually going to suggest taking that sentence out of Article Six because, I mean, it was raised previously by taxation, so it's not really accurate to say it's not raised by taxation, so.
New taxation. You could say new.
New. Yes, new would be accurate.
And it's a pretty straightforward sentence, no amount to be raised by new taxation.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
They put that in both Article Four and Article Six.
Do you want to add that to Article Four?
Makes sense. Does that do it for you, Ken?
Okay. Other changes to the explanation for Article Four? Okay, moving on, Article Five. How much money is still in that, in that fund?
There shouldn't be anything. I think we drained it completely. And there might be some interest, but it's dollars, I mean, used it all.
Sue, on the explanation, where, right from the word discontinue, should it not continue to say discontinue the tract?
Yeah, I noticed that, yeah. We discontinue this fund? Add that to the end of it? I just, that was one that we didn't have anything last time, and I just kind of threw that in there, so, however you want to change it.
That would be pretty straightforward.
Is that good enough? Okay.
I just wondered whether we should indicate that there's almost nothing in it.
This fund has a zero balance?
Well, it's, it might, it might not have zero, though. It might.
Which has been almost completely depleted or something like that.
This fund has, yeah, I think probably we should get an accurate number in there, though, Sue.
Well, it's going to vary because each month, if it has a little bit in there, it'll accumulate a couple of cents, you know, I mean, it's...
But could you say...
Approximately.
Approximately, I can put approximately.
Twenty dollars or...
Yeah, it's not a big, it's not a big amount of money that we're...
So how do you want to state that?
This fund has approximately...
Approximately, okay.
X dollars remaining.
Okay.
And if you say that it has $10, then the question would be, where does it go? It's going to go to the general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
So I could put, which will be transferred to the general fund? Well, it already says that.
That's what, that's what it says in the article.
It says it in the article.
Can I just ask, is this inconsistent at all because we're saying track fund instead of field renovation project?
No, this is exactly what that fund is called.
That is what it's called, and that's what we've always referred to.
When it was created.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Where it has to go. By Todd.
In a previous life.
When he was a younger man.
Yeah. Yeah. Are you okay with five? Okay, six?
Just, we changed those. Is that how you wanted it, Denise?
By new taxation?
No amount to be raised by new taxation, yeah.
Yep. Do you want to put the approximate amount in that line, too?
Well, they're all, it's all up in the top. They're all in there.
I was thinking the word approximately, just in case you do have, what if it's $13,005 or something and you've spelled it out as $13,000, you won't be able to get rid of the account?
Yeah, I think those are, like, close to...
You're comfortable with it?
I think we're comfortable with them. I mean, I'll go back and check, but I'm pretty sure...
Well, they're up to also, so you must have estimated high.
This actually came from the trustee. He actually created this because he wants to clean these up, and he gave us those numbers knowing what was in those funds.
Okay. So are we okay with six? Seven? Do we, I guess the question I raised earlier, and apparently it's still kind of unclear, but it's very hard for somebody to figure out what to compare the default budget to. And this is an unusual vote where the default budget is higher than the budget we're proposing because the default budget should be compared to Fund 10. Those are the two numbers that are comparable, right?
Yep. And then based on what Sue is saying, we'll probably want to hold off until we get guidance from the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So could we, we could still do more with explanations, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I think maybe hold off until we understand...
And then I will be changing those numbers because you've changed your budget. That number reflects the number before you changed to option three, so I will change that number.
So add the $55,000.
Because your Fund 10 is now bigger, yeah, so I will make those changes.
Okay. So do you need, do we need anything else in the warrant articles then?
No.
No, other than you can go to the next item, which says to assign them for your deliberative session.
Okay.
Right? Is that what we have on there next?
Yep. I just have two suggestions. I think, I would like to suggest that Al do number seven because I think he's been the most on top of the budget of any of us, and he can also explain the Durham ramifications. And I would like to take three because I was on the negotiating committee for three. And I think other people, if they have ones they want to, I didn't have to assign any others, people, I mean, I can do that if...
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter?
Yeah.
No? Then just let Denise do four.
Okay.
Maria, you want to do five? Six, Sarah, I think I, you do, would you do six?
Sure.
And then we have the present, we usually have a board member do the presentation of the service award, so who hasn't? How about Dan, you do that, okay? So do we need a motion to endorse those?
Do we need a motion?
No?
Do we need that?
Nope. Okay, do you have? So do we have all those, is that assignment? Do you have the assignment? Okay. Okay, it's done. Public hearing, I'm not sure what that entails.
Just to remind the public that we have our public hearing on the budget on January 11th at 7:00 in the high school auditorium. And then I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that I'd be presenting to the Durham Town Council on January 9th, and then to the Madbury Board on February 6th and the Lee Board on January 30th, all budget presentations. But the official one is the 11th.
Okay.
The others are courtesies to each of the town.
Okay. So we've approved the budget, but we don't have to vote again to approve the budget because that's...
That's after the public hearing.
Well, we haven't approved the warrant articles yet, though, right?
Still after the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So we don't need to do that?
So the next time, we'll go through the motions because you'll have feedback from the public related to the budget that may impact your final decisions.
Okay. And let's just have a motion to approve the pres, since that's on here, just have a motion to approve the presentation of warrant articles. Denise?
I motion to approve the presentation of warrant articles as assigned by Tom.
Okay, moved by Denise, seconded by Al. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that assignment's been affirmed. Motion to approve the 2017, 2018 school calendar.
So I'm going to ask the board once again to delay until the February 1st meeting. The high school was looking at the calendar and is still in the process of making a recommendation that may change the midpoint from the 29th to the 22nd of January. And I wanted to give Suzanne enough time to work that through with her staff before we finalized it here.
Okay, so that'll be on a future...
It'll be on the February 1st, yep.
February 1st, okay.
Tom, can I just have one?
Sure.
Just, as I was looking over it, it says first day for all students, and I was just wondering if we could change that.
And that's the other reason why I wanted to wait to the first because we have a kindergarten meeting set up for what date, Todd? 23rd. And I want to get that feedback so I can give it to you.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve the Oyster River High School maternity leave of absence. Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the Oyster River High School maternity leave of absence for May of 2017 and end of the year and request for the school year of 1718, so a year leave of absence.
Okay, moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Al. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, that leave of absence is granted. Motion to approve the Oyster River High School field trip to Jazz All-State Festival. Al?
I'll move, approve the Oyster River Jazz Band All-State Festival field trip from February 2nd to February 4th of 2017.
Moved by Al, is her second, seconded by Denise. Discussion on this. All those in favor, please. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that field trip is approved. I think we have no other further business. In terms of motions, school board committee updates?
At the last meeting, I think we didn't talk about the policy committee that had in between, and we had talked, as Troy had brought up, that we talked about trying to craft a policy about electronic devices and social media in school. We also talked about a policy of people perhaps volunteering in schools and whether background checks are necessary or not. So there were some items, none came back, because we're still investigating all of them, but those were works in progress. I think I left some out, do you?
We're meeting next week.
Well, all the ELO, since we have the ELO position, so there's so much at hold because of that, is that going to come back to us soon?
Yeah, I think that's ready, and I think that probably could have happened.
We can bring it at the next meeting, we were just waiting for all of this to finalize.
Okay, good.
Then what about the, what's the, how is the, the policy about the electronics going to come, I mean, are you guys going to craft the policy and then bring it for the board and the community, or are we going to inform the, I mean?
The, you know, unless I get different direction from the board, the policy committee heard from the students, heard from the staff, and the direction was to rewrite that policy. I think the policy isn't necessarily going to be the issue, it's going to be the procedures.
Correct.
And, you know, part of that is communicating the new policy and procedures and getting feedback, so we could actually have what's called a public hearing at the board level, we don't have to have a special forum or anything, and share the revised policy and procedures, open it to questions, close the public hearing, then go to the board meeting, and then that will inform the board in relation to the adjustments to policy. That would be typically what we would do.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And I think part, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we heard from Troy in this student senate here in the high school, but really kind of trying to think is, should there be a different policy for high school, for middle school, and of course, elementary school, because kids are at different developmental stages?
We would have a public hearing on a policy?
You can, if you want to, you've gotten feedback from the public, it's not, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an option that's open to you, it's not one that you've, I think we've used it maybe three or four times in the four and a half years I've been here, where we've had a public hearing.
And the only reason I brought it up is because we have had, you know, a few parents very concerned about the policy, and I just think it's one of those, it's, I think it's going to be a big deal, and I think if you change that policy or the R, again, I think, I understand that the policy is probably not what's going to change, it's going to be more the R, but I think if that changes, that that's going to be a big deal.
And remember, though, with policies, we do have that first read and second read as well, which, so on the first read, people see that on the agenda, they'll hear what we do, it gives them a full two weeks or more to then contact the board as well, so.
I think that's.
Yeah. Okay, committee updates, public comment?
I'm Dean Rubin, from the public. Happy New Year, everybody, everybody had a good time. In the interest of language, like Maria, this bottom line here, overall budget impact on the sheet, well, it's sort of a fantasy, and I hope, I hope we bury this piece of paper and never see that bottom line again. I think the, what we call budget impact is the line you guys work, you work from, which is labeled less revenue over here. Less revenue is bad, we need more revenue. Anyway, that's all, I think you guys did a great job on the budget, and I'm only really complaining on the label on this bottom corner.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, you have the list of future meetings, it's going to be a busy time coming up. I'd just like to thank, not that we've finished all the work on the budget, but to thank Sue, Jim, and the board, I think we worked our way through a tough budget year, not that it's done yet, but I think, just thank you for the thought that went into the deliberations on the budget. So we need a motion to go into non-public session to, for the superintendent's evaluation, could have that motion? Kenny?
I move that we go into non-public, based on RSA 91- A, colon, 3, Roman move 2, subscript A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, and the disciplining of such employee, and this is for the superintendent evaluation, which fits that criteria.
Moved by Kenny, is her second? Second by Al, roll call?
Dan Klein, yes.
Sarah Farwell, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Maria Barth, yes.
Thank you.